Mr. Jones, sorry, sir.
Yeah. See your name on print quite a bit, county and L. Wherever.
Yeah, good news.
Yeah. You're running the shoes, right?
Yeah, I guess so.
Yeah.
We're good.
They're like that.
Yeah. All right, we have nine minutes for stick.
I was convinced that, like, we were done.
Those are out.
And then I thought, oh, at least we have our best. You know what?
That were my two shirts.
Yeah.
Good, good.
They would have worn.
Yeah.
Well, for forty didn't have a turtle eye. Did your phones off tonight?
Yes.
Could you hear it from here?
Yeah. The new one at the end of.
They all, they all went off.
No.
Was he?
Well, that's what they're saying. I was in my basement. But I think you don't have to.
No, I just.
It was one of the highlights.
I found those at night.
Our phone is. I mean.
Hey.
And the mascot.
We'll get the test.
This is the first time.
What about Parker? Want to go a little bit? You know, a lot of.
Yeah, I think that. I don't think.
Totally get that.
The school is going to be.
Yeah. No, I love that.
Vicious.
Good seeing you. On Sunday night. Two stations. And you let them talk. They've been most of them three of us. Long time. They, 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 I don't know. About ten seconds. If already it's a truck here.
Yeah.
So then if you get, it's called out. Back of the pass. We'll call up. I guess, I guess.
I feel like. So I think.
Yeah.
Oh, she's so.
Yeah. Put it up, yeah.
No, overall.
Overall, yeah.
Today.
Yeah. That's cool.
There he is.
Hey, buddy. That may, that's.
Get some service money.
I text, I was like.
Cover it up. You will.
Yeah.
Like everybody worked and hit that wire. It's not getting ready for that time.
I just stopped after took some stuff. About every ten minutes.
Well, you, you walked in right when I was on the phone with.
Yeah.
This is.
You know, three months before back, right?
If you look at, I mean, just silver phone, right there, the addition behind, right? Not character. Just the amount of traffic that's going that way down six, seven.
Yeah. Yeah.
So. This could help. Figure out how to be able to expand that. And we got that right there. It's always been a dangerous career. And you got that big drop off. I have my axe back now. Yeah. The whole chat. You don't make this more than that stuff. No, no, nothing at all. I don't really think that's going to be too controversial either. I should have. Chick's. That way we're all in front of everyone. And we'd all be out there. Where, you know, here, we'd all be here.
So that's bigger system.
And we're all. Might have thrown by.
Truly great. Too small. Didn't have that weight tax order.
Yeah. There's not a room, then if anybody. I think we're all expecting both. It's the. So. What about. Well, I figured we can have excess scene over there. I just figured we need all this.
When you come on spring break?
First of all, it's late. Typically coincides with. It starts on.
It might be off.
I know. And so, yes, we're going to.
I was just saying.
You fly or drive?
Fly. Eighty-six, it's not trying.
All right.
I mean, you can, you can fly Southwest and it's cheap and so we're just flying. Yeah, we're doing a universal.
I just, just. Just taking.
Ezra's. He's thirteen now. There's a lot of.
Block guys. Six block.
Just.
All the days meeting in order, have a moment of silence. Okay. Hannah, do you want to? Please in the pledge?
Oh, sure.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Willie Rollcall?
Robert Jones.
I'm here.
Marissa Skaggs.
Here.
Shane Davis.
Here.
Steve Danny.
Here.
Chip Bab is not here.
Okay, move on to approval of minutes from our prior meeting.
Um, there is one edit that I found in these. In the public comment section, Melissa Creed, who's not here tonight. From my notes, it says that she was actually asking about. The manholes and the paving gap on State Street and not the Martin Insurance Lot. Um, so I think that that should be amended. And I'll make a motion to approve with that amendment.
Second. I have a motion in a second.
Listen, tell her to write it on there.
Will do.
Thank you.
Agree, yeah.
I have a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. All passes. Move on to the clerk treasures report.
Okay, we didn't have a, uh, number for last month's general fund, but it was nine thirty-five, three eighty. And it's about four hundred dollars more this month, so that's going the right direction. You've all got a list of the vouchers and all the money we paid out, four or five pages. I think that's all I've got tonight till later.
For the clerk treasures report, do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Department reports. Chief Nodan, are you on?
Yes, sir, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right, good evening, everybody. As you can see, our reports for February, as shown on the screen, we had thirty-eight runs. Kind of a slow month for us, which was a good thing. Compared to the previous years, it seems like we've been pretty busy. We had our ISO audit on March second with the gentleman. From the Insurance Service Org, Insurance Service Office and couple items that going forward that I'm going to be presenting to legal counsel to get something drafted up for the town of Pendleton, as well as the town of Ingles going forward. If the fire territory does go through it, since we're under contract with the town of Ingles. That he suggests that both participating units adopt the Indiana State Fire Code. Current to whatever their standards are, whatever year they're actually at right now, I believe they're twenty twenty-one, I believe. That way it allows me to go into a business and do an inspection yearly annual, or our annual inspections. Outside of any life safety issues that may arise if someone calls and complains on, so that gives me the authority to go into any business to do an inspection. Those are a big things to do as far as the ISO goes. If you guys aren't familiar with ISO. Out of the hundred percent, fifty percent of it is related to the fire. Out of that fifty percent, it could be to the capacity of the water that's in the fire engines, to the appliances, nozzles, the hose that's carried, the ladders that are carried. The area that we cover, the age of our equipment. So it's a very detailed oriented audit that we have to go through. Forty percent of that is with the water company. That being said, that they have to maintain records for every fire hydrant that's put into the towns. Yearly inspections done, make sure that the flows are right, the water plants are tested appropriately. So that's forty percent of it, and then ten percent is on dispatch. Basically, it tells them how fast we get out of the fire station to an emergency call. To how fast the dispatchers actually answer the nine-one-one calls once it rings into the dispatch center. So out of those hundred points, right now, we were a five and a five X means that we're right in the middle. The five X means is we do have areas that are non-hydrated, that's why we have a three thousand gallon tanker that we respond to house fires with. To be able to shuttle, one of the big things is that we have to do is we have to do a tanker shuttle operation. Where we have to show that we can flow for two hours continuously, two hundred gallons a minute. On a, on a house fire. Now, that's something that we have to make sure that when we get a structure fire, that we have plenty of water going, so they do a formula. That shows that we have to flow two hundred gallons a minute for continuous operations for two hours, so. You can imagine how many tankers that'll, that'll have to have because you got from the fire to the scene, back to the hydrant to fill up, dump. And fill, and then all that is tabulated into what goes into that. Like I said, he suggested that both towns adopt the Indiana State Fire Code, so that was a big one. So we need to make sure that we get that on the tap going forward as well, so. You know, manpower, we were good in manpower. For volunteer fire departments. One third point for every firefighter. If we were a full-time firefighter or have crews manning the fire apparatus at the station continuously, whether paid or volunteer. Then we actually get one point for every firefighter that we have, so. Just because we come from home, we get a deduction on that. So we actually get, you know, a third of a point instead of the whole point. Excuse me, for being, staying on station, so we're looking at some potentially some changes coming down the road. Obviously, once we go paid, then we'll get the full point for that because we'll have crews staying on station, so. Uh, here again, it's a, you know, another benefit, not only just to get out the door fast, but also gives a break on homeowners' insurances going forward, so. Other than that, we received our boat that was graciously donated by several business owners in the Pendleton Business Association. Uh, and some personal donors throughout the community, so. Uh, and we took delivery of it yesterday, it's still sitting on a skid, so we're trying to get things squared away and. Uh, get it all put together and get some training with some decent weather, so hopefully next week, when it's seventy, eighty degrees, we'll be outside. Uh, in the water doing some training on that, so. Some other good things coming, we've received some gracious donations from another business for some thermal imaging cameras going forward. That will be announced at our next business meeting, so we'll have more to come on that. Uh, of, of the business owners that was able to donate some much-needed thermal imaging cameras, like it's. The thermal imaging cameras we have are just like your, your cell phones. Once you take them out of the box, you got to keep the firmware updated, and after two, three years, they're basically obsolete. These are going on eight to nine years old, so definitely much needed improvement in the technology with thermal imaging cameras, so. Other than that, that's my report for this evening, and if you guys have any questions or comments, I'll be open to those.
All right, thank. Thanks, chief. Good.
All right, thank you all, appreciate it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Pendleton Police Department reports of February. Years ago, when we made the arrangements at the schools about hiring an SRO and splitting the cost. We've been able, through the police department, to provide equipment, cars, fuel, training, all the other stuff besides the sour. Budgets getting tighter, different things like that, so we've been in talks with Mr. Hall about getting into their cash a little bit to help out with the cost of the officers, so. They have a grant, it's a matching grant. Uh, it's kind of interesting, you can't use it for a car, but you can use it for everything else involving school security. So they're trying to move some monies for us, and hopefully we can still continue with that partnership. And it's a fruitful way between us and them, but that's working out well. Uh, Officer Trailer, we still have, or Taylor, we still have people coming to the department. East Elementary students came to visit, I think this was a first grade class, and coloring books were hits, so the little kids still love and join coming up to the. We had a focus group at South Madison Community Foundation, this was a real interesting question-answer period, lasted for an hour. And a bunch of, uh. What would you say, leaders from different communities, LaPelle, Ingles, Pendleton, et cetera, Fire Chief and I were both there. And it was a good time to answer some questions, brought up some good topics as the town grows. I think the results of that will be released here soon to everybody. And. A lot of people may have heard today downtown, there was a crash, and people described it, that it sounded like a bomb going off. But what it was, the subject fell asleep and then put his foot on the brakes, of course, and ran straight into the back of the car in front of performance tax. And supposedly it was extremely loud, everybody walked away, but that's what that was. And then Officer Kroga and Sergeant Brown today were able to take a report of a guy that climbed into someone's car at Speedway. Ended up, the guy had stolen a car from Muncie. They made the arrest, he was also a sexual predator, so they got him for breaking into a car, stolen car, and then it just happened. The, the theft of the car was through Muncie PD, so we reached out to Muncie PD. They had a detective driving from Indy and just passing our exit, so they were able to coordinate that, so he came to Arbor Department, questioned the guy, the guy gave full confession of the theft of the car in Muncie. We got him on the involvement here, and we got him put in jail, so it was a perfect, where's the cops, it all worked out, so that occurred today. For the month of February, we had one thousand eighty-five total dispatched incidents, and point out here, we had forty criminal arrests. Bigger numbers of that month. And that is all I have.
Have anything for the chief?
Good work.
Judge Gus, are you on? He's on vacation, okay. Park Department.
Good evening. Not much to add, other than what's in the report in front of you, I did want to give you a quick update on the zone improvement plan that we presented to the planning commission. Was it last Monday, last Wednesday? So, uh, overall, I thought it was a very productive first presentation, they had some good thoughts and comments about some things that they'd like cleaned up. And a little bit more research as far as an escalator clause for inflation to go in there, so. We're working with Big Artillery to get all that stuff ironed out, and then we'll take it back to the planning commission next month, and then hopefully to you guys on the fourteenth. But other than that, um, everything else is going good. Youth sports signups have been a big, big hit, so the parks can be very busy come spring season. Any questions for me?
All good.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Planning.
All right, we've got our monthly building permit report in front of you, if you have any questions about that, just let me know. The iWork permit recording system has been working wonderfully. The utility office has been working in tandem with Brett and Cookie and Scott. To catch any permitting errors, and they've been doing a really diligent job with that, they've just been really cranking it out up there. Our new website has the text e-alert function now built, it does work now. But it only works for urgent alerts, it cannot be utilized for news or announcements, it's only for like, there's a snow emergency or water boil, something like that, and they have to sign up for it. The facade grant has two applicants for the April meeting. The other projects that we have, again, just really aren't moving until springtime when it's warm out and they can work on their buildings. Let's see, our U D O, I mean, I'll actually be voting on some amendments this evening, those consist of just pretty minor things, asphalt sealants. Buckery yards, things like that. And, let's see. Uh, for Carrot Glen, the final phase three B has been recorded in Huntsinger Farm, their cold spring section two. Uh, we did just today get the revised plans back from the developer, so we're running those through our engineer to see if they are up to snuff, and we can approve their secondary flat. And then the US thirty-six project, the final details have been. Regard, addressed regarding the trail alignment along Hayden Way, and now we have our department heads working with CDM Smith on any infrastructure details before plans get finalized. And that's all we've got.
Anyone have any questions for planning? Thank you.
Thank you.
So town managers report, most of the, that I was just talking about, it's been addressed. Anna or in the new business, so to save time.
Okay. Go to some old business, first of all, I know Jeff's going to, uh, before we start with the park bond. With the ARP monies, we use some of the impact fees to cover the Franklin Street project, which we took the money from that. Was able to purchase two police vehicles with the ARP monies. Just so everybody knows, I was, we didn't go over, I think we're still under a little bit of budget with that, with a little bit of buffer. But just so everybody knows that we were able to use our impact fees for the road, and the ARP funding funds, we're going to the police department to purchase the two vehicles. Now let's go to the park bond.
So tonight, we are here to ask your blessing for a new bond issue for the park. The main components of this, as most all of you know, are the new playground and a potential land acquisition for the park. So, uh, tonight we have Dennis Otten, who's been working on the legal side, and Jim Treat is our numbers guy. So I'll let Dennis kind of introduce the ordinance, and then if you guys have any questions about that, or any of the numbers, Jim will be happy to answer any of those, so.
Thanks, Aaron, good evening, members of the council, it's good to see you all, I know, we tried to communicate last month and then some technical difficulties, but things certainly seem better now. So as Aaron mentioned, we've been working on this bond issue with the Park District, probably since about September is when we got started. Like all, we were talking earlier before the meeting, these bond issues take time, uh, so there's been a series of proceedings before the Park Board. Which we needed to get taken care of before we come to the council, because it certainly doesn't make sense to come before the council until the Park Board has completed most of its proceedings. So we've had a number of public hearings on the bond issue, including the appropriation of the proceeds. And initially, when this financing started, uh, it was just contemplated that this would be what we call a new money financing, it was going to be for the park projects that Aaron just mentioned that are up there on the screen. However, after we got through most of the proceedings, we were contacted by an underwriting firm that indicated there was an opportunity to potentially refund the Park District's outstanding two thousand thirteen bonds. And I remember that bond issue, I worked on that one, and we were before the council, very much like this one. Um, and so we did some amendments at the Park Board level to the resolutions they had adopted to also authorize the refunding of those bonds. And Jim will talk in a second about the numbers, which are probably of most interest to you, about the refunding and, and the Park District bonds themselves, but. The way the resolutions are structured is that if, if this council gives its approval to the park bonds. The next steps would be to proceed with selling the bonds, and at that point in time, we would take a look at the market, determine whether the refunding made financial sense. And if it does, we would sell one, one issue of bonds, that would do both the refunding and the new money. But, you know, the way the markets are, if the refunding doesn't make sense, we would go forward just with the new money fees. That would save that, that ability to refund those thirteen bonds if the market does come back around. But from a standpoint of the bonds, they're like other Park District bonds, they're payable from a property tax levy, tax exempt, semiannual debt service. But that's all I've got, are there any mem, uh, questions that you all? But that's all I've got. Are there any questions that you all have before I turn it over to Jim?
It seems prudent to roll that in, particularly with interest rates and have to anticipate rates probably going up here soon. What the Fed does on that, so to lock in some better rates seems certainly something to look at.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. And Jim, you can probably add some more color to that on the length it's left on these thirteen bonds. And why now is probably the best time to look at that. Okay, I'll turn it over to you, Jim.
Thank you. Jim Treat, we've run an associate, we've been working with the park district for quite some time. I think I was the two thousand one was the Ball Field Park, the original one, and I did those bonds where the town, the park district. So that's where I, I've been doing all the park bonds since then, at least on the financing side. Did you guys get, there wasn't anything attached to the agenda, but I, I had some schedules that I had done actually for the earlier meeting. And it has just about four pages, pretty brief, but some numbers on there. You have them on your lap, on your screens or anything like that? Like rough copies, it might be helpful just hand them out if you want to look at them. So the first one is just a summary of the bond sizing. We're asking for approval in total of about three point four million dollars in bonds. Two thousand thirteen bonds have one million one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in principal outstanding. So we need to pay that together with interest since the last payment through hopefully April, mid-April to late April. And so that's that first column of one one eight two, that would be a cash deposit to redeem those bonds. Plus an allocation issuance cost. So the total about one point two million is for the refunding portion. And then Aaron wanted us to provide for about two million. We've got about two point one almost in total project funds excluding issuance costs. And we are still waiting for the bids. So we will not finalize anything until the bids come in and know what we can afford and what we can't. Certainly we will downsize if we don't need that much. And so we're hoping this is the high side number. But you don't know with economy these days and supplies, what it's going to do. So, but this is the max of what we can do. So if, if the bids come in higher, we're just going to have to make some adjustments to the project. Whatever we can do to afford it or come back to you for another approval, which hopefully we will not be doing. That's not the plan. So that's the three point four million. That's what I wanted to go through with you first. The second page is a summary of where we were at at the beginning of the year on the refund. So look at that. So the two thousand thirteen bonds pay off and by the middle of two thousand twenty-nine as they're currently scheduled. As you can see, that's that first column and the semi annual debt service is about two hundred thousand dollars, ninety thousand percent. So the interest rates on those bonds, this goes to your question of a minute ago, are four to five and a half percent. So clearly we want to, if we have the opportunity, refund those. Now, this schedule shows that at the time we ran these numbers, which was probably at the end of late December or early January, we were looking at about a hundred and forty thousand dollars in savings, which is quite a bit for this size of remaining bond. I just checked this week with the underwriters that we're working with. We know the, it's, the savings have gone down because interest rates have gone up since the first of the year. We still are at about a hundred thousand dollars. So I feel pretty good about that. So that in comparison, I mentioned a minute ago, that the existing interest rates on these bonds are four to five and a half percent. We're still at, let's say, two point four, I'll be even generous, two point five, what we can refine that. So I think we're going to be in good shape. We can get this done fairly quickly. Once we get the approvals, once the bids are in and we can finalize. We're going to be doing all the rest of the prep simultaneously so that as soon as we know final numbers and what the market is, we'll go out right away. So that's the plan is to save as much of this savings as we can. I mean, technically we could refund bonds if there's one dollar savings. But that's not our, that's not our plan. Hopefully it'll still be in this ballpark and that's something we'll evaluate, get back to the park board and see what they want to do. The third page, I don't know that we really need to go through. This is what the total bond would look like. But I, what I, I think I just want to, in interest of time, let's skip to the last page. This is what really tells you where the park district currently stands and what these transactions will do. So as you can see, that this starts in twenty-one because we were working on this last year. But the two thousand eleven lease rental bond is now paid off. That, that twenty-two debt payment has been made. Thirteen's bond will go away because we're going to refund them into the twenty-two bonds. The only thing left is the twenty eighteen lease. So what we're looking at is how do we structure these new bonds around that lease? And be sensitive to the taxpayers, since this is a tax paid bond issue, property tax paid bond issue. So what we did was this year's approved budget for the town and the park district includes seven point four cents for debt payments. That's the levy, whether you're in town or in the park district outside of town, it comes from a different place, but it's the same tax rate. So our goal was to try to pull these transactions together, provide the new money, pay off the old ones and structure it so they were still at about the same tax rate. That was, that was what we felt was an important way to go. It's not always that critical to people, but that's, that's the approach we took. And so far it's been received well. Now, as the districts and the town continue to grow, that tax rate will probably go down like it did because it felt two cents from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two, partly because of growth, partly because you use some cash on hand to make some final payments of these bonds that were rolling off. But our goal is to, is to keep this tax rate no higher, lower if possible. And that's how we've structured it. So that's how you can see on these new bonds, we've got about seven or eight years at two hundred thousand dollars a year. And then the last three years, we've got one hundred and seventy thousand. So we're trying to keep that total debt payment about four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year. If we have a little bit more, we can go up to twenty years on these bonds, but we're, we like to go stay towards the ten number, not the twenty number. So this is about fourteen here, but you can see in that last year, we don't have very much money left to pay off. So if we need to push a little bit more into that last year to keep the tax rate no more than seven and a half cents, we can do that. We've got the room to do it. If the tech, if the interest rates are up a little bit higher than what we've got, we still, again, this gives us a lot of flexibility. Because we're approving a twenty-year bond issue. That's the standard for these type of general, tax supported bonds. But we're not going to take that whole term. And that's why I wanted, this is really the important schedule for you to see. This is the impact on the taxpayers, on the town, and it's folded into your budget into their budget. So with that, I will, I'm seeing a lot of nods, so I think I'm answering, hope I'm answering most of the questions and what if there are others? Let me know now.
Well, that's, yeah, certainly seems logical on this to roll the one into that. Is there a downside on that? I don't know what it would be, but is there a downside to rolling the one in the other?
I'm the only, not that I know of, the downside as you mentioned would be if we think interest rates will fall further. Well, we already know that's probably not going to be the case. So no, I don't think there is a downside.
All right.
We're sharing some of the issuance costs. Oh, one of the upsides too is we had budgeted capitalized interest in the new bond when we first did it. Well, because we're wrapping this bond and there's already a levy for twenty-two in the, in the twenty thirteen bonds, we can use that levy for this year's payment. We don't have to use any cap I in the new budget, in the combined budget. So now it's about forty-five thousand dollars, I think.
Yeah.
So that was a plus.
That's a plus.
That we had planned on and when I put the numbers together, it's like, well, we don't need that anymore. So I think there's some, there's a definite synergy there, even if the savings is not as sweet as what I'd hoped it'd be from initially looking at it. So.
Still there's others.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So anything else?
Is there an issue with the debt limit in the years to come?
The, yeah, no, the, well, there is a limitation and the two percent limit, actually print it out, I had that calculation. So the park district has its own two percent limit, apart from the town and RDC. So there's three different two percent.
Okay.
So the park district's limit of two percent is is three point eight million dollars, I'll round it up.
Right.
So right now, we don't have any other debt other than the twenty thirteen bonds that count against it. So we had originally talked about doing this as another lease rental bond to avoid that. Because lease rental bonds do not count against the statutory limit. But there's more steps and there's a little more cost to doing it. So as this came together and the A V grew and we updated this calculation, we've got three point eight. We will be using most of that, but that's the park district rate. So they're going to have to live with that level of bonding. Now, we're, you could always do another lease rental bond. I'm not advocating another tax rate. But that, I think that's what you were getting at, what the debt limitations are and where we're, excuse me, where we're at on that.
Okay.
Amount. So we're within that park district's legal limit, although we are using a significant portion of it. But it doesn't really hurt anything. We don't have any plans to go out and issue new debt that we'll need in, in any, in the near term at least.
And I think Aaron can speak to that a little bit as far as like long range planning and like there not being a need for another bond within the reasonable future. Yeah, so.
Any other questions or comments about the park bond?
Most everything very well, so. No, I don't think I have anything else to add.
Yeah, question on the, on the pool.
Yes.
We've had obviously discussion about the status of the pool going forward and where you are on that. But if you, if you looked at reconstruction of the pool, if you were to go that consideration on the park board. Would the admission about talking about council governments as far as might have some funds available.
Yes.
Federal fund, I think usually it's available through them. But are there thoughts on the park board and looking down the road? The status of the pool, could if you get into renovation of a pool, if you're going to retain a pool there, the expense of that? How would you entertain the cost that would go with that? Obviously, we don't know at this point in time, but the, how would you be able to do that? If you were to do that?
We would most likely have to tap into impact fees to do that or issue a lease rental bond. Because even at the two percent limit, I don't know that our two percent is enough to do something significant to the pool, provide the upgrades that it would need. So we would be looking outside of this type of bond anyways, most likely a partnership with someone else.
All right.
Yeah.
That's playground and potential property acquisition that will be on that. Yes, it was. Yeah. No, it was, it was heavily damaged by the tornado and that equipment is over twenty years old now, which is the life expectancy of a playground.
The estimated, the estimated project cost right now from Aaron's design firm is one point seven seven million dollars. So the amount that they're actually using for new progress is one point eight eight. So that only leaves a buffer of about a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And you add on a contingency, innocent being two point oh seven million. You know, the only red, only yellow flag I see, I don't like to say red flag, the only yellow flag is when we get those bids back. And you know, then we, then the rubber kind of hits the road and we really look at it in a different light. But I mean, the contingency is built in there twice. So hopefully, fingers crossed, the bids will come in in line with the project cost as we see them right now.
Yes. And, and when we did estimate the project at one point seven seven, those are, that is on the very high end. Those are very cautious, so.
Yep. Sure.
I know we have one or two. I do think we do need something upgraded into the type. Do not have the ability to access. But I'm trying to get to it first off, there's money through there.
And that was one of the big pieces we looked at when redoing this was creating that accessibility. So a lot of the new servicing is the Ford and Place servicing that allows that access.
Right, like there is that.
Anything else? If you don't have anything else, I'll, I can, a motion to approve. I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those. Park one passes.
Jeff, do we need to do two readings tonight if possible or?
We did, we did introduce it.
Okay.
At our February meeting.
So we don't need the second.
I think we're good.
Okay.
Think we're good. We're good to go.
Perfect. Thank you.
Go, go. Good. Thank you.
All right, let's move on to new business. amended lease of the Ingalls Fire Station. Let some of these people leave. Yeah, Chief Odon, are you still on?
Yes, I am.
All right. You want to speak on the amended lease of the fire station?
Yeah, basically, since we are under contract with the town of Ingalls for fire protection, we're utilizing their facility down there. We have a, an engine tanker and an ambulance staged out of there. So this was a lease that was drawn up by both legal councils and passed to the, the, both town boards. And I do not have any issues with it. It was for the lease of ten dollars a year. And then basically, you know, we would be responsible for, you know, any damage or anything like that. And then they would be responsible for any of the others such, you know, fixed, you know, structure portions of it. Since it would be their facility. I do know that they are looking to do some remodeling for us to make it more compliance for, for us to have living quarters. Because right now their living quarters is in their apparatus room, right next to all the diesel fumes and stuff. So all of the bids are out there to be returned on the twenty-second of this month. So we'll have more information going forward to that. But as far as the lease goes, and my concern is I have no issues with this, the way it's worded and everything going forward.
I, yes, I. Motion to approve.
To, to adopt the, the lease. So move.
I'll second.
You got a motion in a second. All those in favor? Motion passes. Contract to amend the CDM Smith.
CDM Smith is the engineer for the N dot project on, they call it US thirty-six. We all call it sixty-seven. It's from basically Madison Avenue up to Water Street. They're going to expand that and put some, and we're, and the woods are allowed to attach to that project. Some lighting and trails and sidewalks. And trails and sidewalks. So originally, the plan was to take the trail that was going to run along the be the west side of sixty seven. On a past Jimmy's Dairy Bar. And then stop at Water Street. The M cog, the M P O for Madison County offered up to contribute eighty percent for design. That if we took that trail at the thirty six intersection and turned it towards Hayden Way. That they would pay for eighty percent of that design. So this amendment is. To do that design. It's not for construction and we put up twenty percent, which is the twenty four thousand. Basically, if you, the reason we changed that is just for safety factors. So instead of bringing the kids. Bringing behind Jimmy's Dairy Bar, if they're coming from the pool, the park, they would come down Hayden Way. And then hit that trail and eventually the high school or wherever they're going instead of staying on sixty seven. We just need your approval.
Questions?
I think it sounded like a good mechanism. I know recently we talked about going down Water Street there, but I think we cut through there.
So yeah, so we'd cut through. It's a drainage. It's a legal drain anyway. We're cut through from sixty seven to Hayden Way. And then. That when the trail is completed, it would go along the west leg of Hayden. You know, it's a horseshoe shape. And. We get the design, we'll probably eventually get federal funds for that.
I think sounds good.
Yep, entertaining motion.
Making motion to to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Planning Director Appointment.
Okay, so Hannah. Is in the right place at the right time, plus she has all the skills. As you know, Caleb moved on into the private sector. And it has a bachelor's degree in planning and also a master's degree. And I think she has the personality for this job also. She has very good leadership skills. And works very well with the developers that come in and talk to her about it. So I'd recommend that. The council appoint her as a planning director. We need to run it through you because she does have some legal responsibilities and authorities. So. We're asking for your approval.
Are there plans in the works to? Write somebody to help you.
So what the plan is, we'll first advertise internally for about. Nobody applies, then we'll advertise externally.
All those in favor of making Hannah the new planning director? Say aye.
Thank you.
Job's yours now. All right, ordinance twenty two oh four.
All right. Craig is here who runs our electric department. The pole attachment fee is. An ordinance that allows us to charge telephone cable. Anybody else who attaches wire to our. Poles, probably a long time coming because they get to do it for free and we have the expense of maintaining it. So Craig's here for questions.
Well, is this standard for?
Yeah, so we did a rate study. And we'll charge and put did the rate study for us. And then what we'll do is we'll go and anybody that we think is has is hanging wire off those poles will go after. Ask, go to them and ask them to start paying. We think there's probably one telephone company might be a little bit resistive, but we'll see how that goes.
Do they have another option?
No.
Don't think so.
Yeah, it's pretty standard practice. We're, we are not the first in line to do this. We're probably going to.
Catching up. We're catching up.
And the formula that's in your ordinance, proposed ordinance is calculated by the state. There, there's not a whole lot of wiggle room on this. Even the with the the fines is pretty much late in your lap by the state. So it's Scott said, this is long overdue in in my opinion.
If we do this and the budget go into the electric utility.
Pardon?
With the funds going to the electric utility or?
Yes.
If we do this.
Yes.
Okay.
Either capital or depreciation. Okay, any comments, questions on twenty two oh four?
I think I think it's a good approach logical. I mean, we have the expense to maintain those poles. You think of the tornado a couple of years ago. They replaced a lot of poles at our expense and they tap into that. I know I mean they had expense to run their wires, but. It ended up with the poles and we did. So I like the approach of this, that we would collect some revenue from them. We maintain the poles. And make a motion to approve if you're ready for that.
I'm ready for that. We got a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
We need to do this.
You would need a motion for consent to to consider passage of ordinance twenty two oh four on the first night it's been introduced. So that has to be unanimous.
And make a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor of admitting the rules, say aye. All right.
Then you can vote again on.
Make a motion on the second to to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second for the second reading for twenty two dash oh four. All those in favor?
You will need to sign that, by the way, we're amendment, I'm going backwards a little bit. If you voted yes, you just need to sign.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have the original up there. It's got a little tag on it.
I've got it. Bro's got all that. All right, let's look at ordinance twenty two dash zero six.
Zone map. Yeah.
All right. So this is a zone change at eight eight four three seven hundred south. It's currently zoned rural res. And they were proposing to rezone it to heavy business or H B. They do, the owner does have plans to parcel it and I'm not exactly sure how big each parcel will be, but it'll be some some split. And they do have to go through B Z A to get to their final use, which would be an indoor outdoor boat storage. And the planning commission gave this a favorable recommendation.
And as Hannah hinted at, in your second whereas paragraph, note there were a couple of commitments made by the owner. The second one is a particular note that this is a zoning district in which there's adult oriented properties is a special use that. This ordinance would eliminate that on a commitment of the owner.
Do I have a motion to approve twenty two dash zero six?
Make a motion approved twenty two oh six.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye. All right, do need to do a second reading.
The planning ones were good.
Okay. Let's go to ordinance twenty two dash zero seven, another zone.
Right. Yep. This is another proposed zone change at five ten South Main. It's currently zoned R C, just residential core. The lower half of the property is they propose to rezone to S F two, which allows for a little bit larger lots. It's a unique circumstance. There are certain constraints on the site that wouldn't allow it to be developed as R C. As it stands, there's topography issues. There's a lot of natural trees there already and it tapers. So the planning commission gave this a favorable recommendation.
Okay, any questions? Make a motion to approve twenty two dash oh seven. Second.
Second.
All those in favor of twenty two dash zero seven, say aye. Move on to ordinance twenty two dash zero eight.
All right, this is another rezone at four thirty nine Water Street. So this is currently zoned rural res. It's about a three and a half acre lot and the proposed rezone was to S F one. The owner would like to split the lot in half and sell the lot to the east side. And with current rural res. Limits, they wouldn't be able to split it and still have it be within code. So they have to go and change it to the the next smallest size of. How residential zoning. So the planning commission gave this a favorable recommendation. And there are some conditions on this one as well about just appropriating right of way. So that we can even out the right of way from East Street over to, well, past the pool. It's only about, I think, thirty feet when it should be fifty. So we're just trying to even that out. So there's not skip jogs in our right of way. And they were completely fine with that. It doesn't affect the current house and it definitely won't affect the new house that they build. There's plenty of room to have proper setbacks.
Have a motion for.
Make a motion to approve twenty two oh eight.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Okay, let's go to ordinance twenty two dash zero nine, amending the U D O.
So these are, there is a list on your G drive there. It's an Excel sheet. Yeah, this one. Of all of the amendments that were passed as written. Through planning commission. I kind of noted on these earlier in the report that these are. Buffer yard type of things. There's something on there about asphalt sealants that we don't have any freestyle cycles and roads cracking. There is one thing, Jeff, you might have to lead me on this. The very last amendment. Originally had been to ban commercial solar and wind farms within the town limits. And we've come to find that per Indiana state code, you cannot ban solar in its entirety at the commercial level. So we have restrictions in place for our commercial solar in the U D O right now. But we would like to go back and essentially rework those. So they're really strong. But the wind we can take out because or can. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. That's what I meant.
So we, what the, this was passed to the plant commission with the. And what Hannah says is correct. You're allowed to regulate solar and you are through the U D O significantly so. But you're not allowed to regulate it so much that it's out of existence. So that that particular portion, I believe the recommendation now. From the, our new planning director and the town attorney is to amend. This ordinance on the U D O such that. The solar is taken out and sent back to the plant commission. When the plant commission gets it back, if they adopt your change, it will become effective on that date. It would not come back to this body. So I would recommend, or I do recommend that. The. The council make a motion to amend. Twenty two oh nine. To delete references to the. Solar, or yes, the solar farms in the last amendment and send back for the to the plant commission for further consideration.
If we did that, you say they would not come back to us. They. They may change in that and say if we were not satisfied with the change, would we have the opportunity?
If they change it, yeah, if they change it from anything you're doing tonight, it comes back again.
All right.
Though look at it this way, they're approving your.
Yeah, right. Yeah, and if they have a discussion, they might change it some more.
Yeah.
Then it come back.
Yes, sir.
That's good.
Do I have a motion to? For ordinance twenty two dash nine?
I'll make a motion that we accept twenty two oh nine with amendment to take out the mention of solar farms. Is that right, Jeff?
Yes.
The right way?
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye. All right, ordinance twenty two dash ten.
So one of the things I implemented when I got here is that in the past when. We had extended operations mostly when it came to snowstorms. In the past, the guys would drive until they just couldn't drive anymore. Were going and following a department, U S Department of Transportation rules. Where they can't be in the driver's seat more than ten hours in a fourteen or a fourteen hour shift. Well, when we did that, it triggered a whole bunch of issues with how do we pay the guys? And so the policy is before you. Basically, it's extended operations, so more than probably twenty four hours. It's all all hands on deck and the guys were just plowing like we did to last one we just had. I think they went about thirty six hours, maybe forty hours. So. This sort of mends the employee manual and it triggers when they are on time and a half or when they're on straight time. So I could go into detail if you want me to on that.
So what's the maximum hours they'll be able to work before they gotta take a break?
So they can, they can only drive for ten hours. And they can only, once they hit fourteen hours on duty. Whatever happens first, then they can't drive anymore. So once they hit ten hours, they can still do other things, which is probably not a good practice anyway. Or let's say they came in and they plowed later in a twelve hour shift, but the first four hours. They were doing things like getting the snowplows ready. Or they could four hours doing something else. They could drive for ten and then for two reasons, they would have to stop. Driving. Continue to do other things, but they have stopped driving because they hit ten hours and they also hit fourteen hours on.
My main concern was just, I mean, there are certain people that'll work at work. Until somebody tells them to stop just because of the extra money. So I was just seeing that after a certain amount of time, then they have to be off.
Yeah, when when the town was smaller and had fewer number of employees, that's what they would do. They would keep the streets open. They just went until they collapsed. We have enough people that we can. Follow what state does, follow what Mass County does. They should go into two twelve hour shifts. And. Basically, because we'll make them take breaks. They'll be here for twelve hours, but they'll have time out of the vehicle. Once they hit, what triggers the time and a half, if they're working outside their normal hours, so they got from midnight, the late night shift. If they go past the forty hours, that triggers it. And because we're forcing them to take breaks, they're also time and a half. Around the clock when they're taking a break.
I'm not concerned about the overtime. I'm just concerned about their safety and.
Right, that's what this is all, what all it's all about. And we're trying to be fair with them. Different, it's different, you know, you know better than anybody here. It's different. When you're constantly working the midnight shift, but when we take them and. Do the boomerang thing and they're in on Monday regular hours and on Tuesday they're starting to work midnight shift and then go back to regular hours. It's really, really hard.
Have you had any employee comments on this?
Well, there was a little bit of cultural resistance because they like to be the heroes and go out there and plow till they drop. But some of the older guys are like, I've been on that, but you know, they've had enough. Yeah. Jarred every time they hit a manhole cover. I think, I think because we're being fair, that resistance went away.
It's all about safety. Get the job done. Absolutely. Safety is.
Do I have a motion to approve the extended operation policy?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All right, have a motion a second. All those in favor of twenty two dash ten, say aye.
We need a second reading on that.
Yes.
Okay. And make a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second to suspend the rules. All those in favor, say aye. Taking much of a second reading for twenty two dash ten.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All right, get a motion a second for the second reading. All those in favor, say aye. Ordinance passes. Now let's look at ordinance twenty two dash eleven.
This is about repealing our net metering. We're going to go to a different system. The one resident that we do have will still be grandfathered in and they'll continue to do the way we were set up, but basically in. But basically, instead of getting a credit for retail, um, this will go away and they'll set up anybody in the future with MPa. And MPa will buy their, um, power ba- back that's generated, the extra power that's generated by their solar solar panels and, um, they'll get, receive cash versus credit. At the, they'll receive cash at the wholesale. We only have one residential customer and then the only other person, the only other entity that's close to that. That's sort of a different deal if I understand it correctly.
Residential or commercial?
Most towns are going to this. The wind, wind all around.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve ordinance twenty two dash eleven?
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Would it be to our benefit to move this along for a second reading?
See any downside?
Make a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll second.
Have a motion a second to suspend. All those in favor, say aye. No motion for a second reading?
I make a motion that we have a second reading on ordinance twenty two eleven.
I'll second.
I have a motion a second for this, second reading ordinance twenty two dash eleven. All those in favor, say aye. Okay, ordinance passes, uh, due resolution R twenty two dash oh two. Jeff, would you wanna speak on this?
Yes, sir. Back, uh, a few years ago, the town of Pendleton ended into, entered into the large nationwide class action against, uh, opioid manufacturers, the damage, uh, that these, uh, manufacturers allegedly caused to towns through, uh, increase in public safety. More calls for, uh, things like Narcan, uh, ambulance runs, police runs, things of that nature. Um, several other municipalities in the county did it, entered into this as well. Uh, the town hired a Cohen and Malat as their, uh, insurance counsel, or the opioid counsel at the time. And that litigation has been going on for several years and is being heard in the eastern district of Ohio. A settlement was reached in twenty twenty one between several, four of the opioid manufacturers in the state of Indiana. But that settlement was contingent upon, uh, local governments that had filed suit against the opioid manufacturers opting into this new agreement. Well, our opioid lit, uh, council, and I agree with this, saw several problems with the settlement. And one of those was the amount of money that the town would receive would be not easily determined. State would effectively get their cut first. And also the political subdivision such as the town of Pendleton would be precluded from going against additional opioid manufacturers in the future. And there has been talk about going after some of the other manufacturers or distributors of opioids. And we couldn't do that if we went into the settlement. Fortunately, and it was actually signed today by, uh, Governor Holcomb, the state legislature has fixed those, uh, holes. Um, because of the holes in twenty twenty one, you opted out of the settlement with the, the three opioid, or the four opioid manufacturers. Uh, earlier this, or last week, our council suggested we opt back in because of the fixes. And if you do opt back in, um, there are several advantages. One of those, we, we now have a number that we would expect to get. And another thing, when, when you, when you sign your agreement with Cohen and Malat, you agreed to, uh, a contingency fee. You haven't had any out of pocket expenses of one third. This agreement knocks that down to fifteen percent of your total take. So that's, uh, and, and don't cry for Cohen and Malat. They can, uh, they can get re, the difference from the state part of the settlement. So they'll be okay. Anyway, the, uh, if you opt back in, the, uh, settlement with, uh, the Kessin Corporation, Cardinal Health and AmerisourceBurgess Corporation would be, uh, one hundred fifty three thousand, four hundred forty five dollars and twenty seven cents. Uh, from that, the cut of the attorney fees, the fifteen percent is thirteen thousand, three hundred forty nine dollars and seventy four cents. And then from Johnson and Johnson, you will receive thirty five thousand, nine hundred eighty two dollars and seventy seven cents. Uh, less your attorney fees of three thousand, one hundred thirty dollars and fifty cents. Uh, this is supposed to be wrapped up at the court level in July. Um, so I'm, I'm hopeful, I don't wanna be overly optimistic, but, uh, the town may see that money this calendar year. I would, I would guess that a restricted fund will have to be, uh, formed and the money will have to be accounted for, it can only be used for certain things. I would guess that it could be used for anything related at all to the epidemic. Probably couldn't get by with paving or something like that, but, but public safety, anything that relates to that, I, I think you'd be in good shape. So it's, uh, um, hopefully to reimburse the town for the, what it has incurred from this mess that has hurt us all over the last ten, fifteen years.
If we were to do that, and we did receive funds, I would say we could consider coming to the ambulance service here. We, we do have a drug problem. We think we don't have a drug problem, Senator, that would be incorrect. We do. And, uh, see, I've seen people my age, older people, down to early teens. And it, uh, I, I get to think, if we get some funds, uh, great, but that won't change, it won't change much. We could consider partnering with the schools, possibly pick their brain on that, see what we can do with the focus on the youth. Educational format, try to get kids to think about some of this stuff before they go to a party and there's stuff going on there and they, they, uh, get the fear of pressure of that and they partake. It, uh, really have a focus that we could, uh, what we can do education wise for kids. It's, it's a tough one to do. It's very tough. Thing, things happen and they happen quick.
I would be very confident that educational programs will be thousand percent okay.
I have a motion for resolution R twenty two dash zero two.
So move.
Second.
Is in favor, uh, opting back in to the opioid settlement, say aye. There's one thing on the, uh, new business board and commission assignments. I don't have any information on that. So if there is something there, I just we're stable to next. Yeah, it's just, okay, yeah, table that till next month. Uh, public comments. Have nothing? Need to adjourn? Okay, need to adjourn.